Okay, we can go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, um, good evening, the Market City Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 17th at 2020. Starting now, we can start with.
No.
So anything okay?
I, I need to go back to, I got out of the meeting somehow myself.
Okay.
Oh, we see you, we see you just fine.
Yeah, okay, I had to mute the, the YouTube wasn't muted. What is? Okay, sorry.
Okay, um, let's start with roll call, um, I'll call your name and say here, Commissioner Primo.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mittelfeld.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Cardillo. And so Dave, you said you had excused absences for.
Eric, Tony, Aaron, and actually now that I think of it, Jessica, I believe, sent me an email a few days ago saying she might not be available tonight.
Okay. Um, moving on to our agenda, are there any, there are no changes to the agenda, we're gonna.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest adding, and I promise it won't take more than a few minutes of your time, but a work session item for the annual report to the city commission, which is December 21st.
Okay. That's fine with me.
Make, do we, we need a motion for this, Joy?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to accept the agenda with the proposed change.
Second.
There we have Commissioner Larson with the motion and Commissioner Dunn with the second, uh, we could do a, just a group all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Um. And then we have the minutes, oh, we don't have the minutes yet, so we don't have to approve those. Uh, do we have any conflicting interests at this time? Seeing as how there's none, we can move on to our public hearing, starting with item A, 02ZOA-11-20 Land Development Code Draft Amendments.
Okay, I'll share my screen. And we're, um, just gonna go through very quickly. What was, um, the planning commission's already been through. Several times. Um, which is these amendments to the LDC. That, I'm not getting the page down. So we have amendments to several articles of the Land Development Code. Article two with definitions, article three concerning uses, land uses in the case of outdoor food and beverage service. Um, in the downtown district, we have. Also a change there with the building heights. For the downtown district maximum building height. Third Street corridor, there are some changes to the. The allowable uses. Uh, dimensional standards. There are some changes to. The riparian buffer language, there are some language changes to PUD. Article six, there are changes to the ADU standards, accessory dwelling units. Removing the family only requirement and. Also this change you see in the middle here, that the condition of approval is gonna be based on. The presentation of a covenant that is. Um, created with the register of deeds to ensure that the occupancy remains, um, that the owner has to. Remain, uh, living on one, in one of the two buildings on the property. And then there are some changes in the minor food production section. Home occupations and home offices. Accessory buildings, some small changes. There are. Changes about the, uh, some minor changes to the clear vision triangle language. Walls and fences creating some more temporary fence clarity, solar. Energy, roof mounted solar unit, um, dimensional requirements. Some changes to the parking standards mainly for multiple family and congregate. Living situations, some changes to, to minor, say they're fairly minor changes to the sign standards. And then in article 14, some procedural or changes to the, uh, standards for. Uh, what is allowed with zoning compliance permits and then in the site plan. Review process standards for site plans, there are several changes and. If anybody has any questions or comments, uh, for staff, be glad to address those, otherwise. If, uh, I don't think we have any public comment. But I'll turn it back to you commissioners if you would like to ask anything.
Commissioner Mittelfeld, will you?
Yeah, just a question about the solar section and I just, I still struggle with them, I know the intent of that new section is to make it as easy as possible. For people to put solar on their roofs, um, and I guess my question is if someone is gonna change like an old asphalt shingle roof to a metal roof. Do they have to get a permit from the city to do that?
The answer is no.
So I guess I'm, I'm struggling to understand why if you have a. Solar panel, which it does have brackets, so it's elevated off of your roof, but it's a roof, ground mounted, I get it, it's a new structure that's like. Changing the footprint of, of a new space, but like if it's. A roof mounted system, I, I'm really struggling why. We need to have a required permit, I mean, I understand putting the guidelines in there, the 2.5 feet from the property line, I'm okay with that. Um, but you know what I mean, like, do we need this to be an additional permit that someone needs to do if it, to me, it seems so analogous to like changing it out from Mel Roof, putting another. Thing on your roof, as long as, you know, they're under, what did we say, under like three feet, I think it is. Uh, on the roof mounted system, yeah, three feet above the surface of the roof, you know what I mean, it's not, like they're putting giant towers up and I just feel like. I don't know, I guess could staff like address that, like why do the, why do we need them to have a permit? To have to pay for a permit to do this?
Well, if your comparison is with the metal roofs, the shingles that incorporate the solar panels are treated the same as metal roofs and not getting a permit, but anything protruding from the roof. Does need to get a permit.
It's an accessory structure. So that's the difference, we define that as an accessory.
Uh-oh, I think I lost you, Dave, did, am I?
No.
Cut out for a sec, can you? Dave, are you frozen? I think Dave's frozen.
I don't know what happened to Dave. I, you know what I mean, I just, that's, seeing the new shingle language in there made me think about it, yeah, I mean. I looked into those solar shingles and when we looked into it, they weren't even selling them in Michigan yet, I think they are, they're still extremely costly. But then I kept thinking, well, if you're, you know, aside from the shingle. I don't know. I don't know if others struggle with this as well, but it just seems like. I know the intention of it is to make it easier for people to do, put solar panels on, but it seems like by adding that extra cost to require a permit. It's almost a barrier.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I, I agree, I don't, I don't necessarily think there has to be a permit, but. I, I remember we had talked about maybe reviewing this whole solar section at a later date and I'm not sure. It, it almost, I don't know, it feels like we're gonna mess it up more if we, if we try and change it right now. Um, since we're kind of under a time crunch to get this done at this point, and I think I remember Dave saying that we could go back and review and have a whole entire. Section that we review is for, for solar and try and get kind of more comprehensive plan for, for how we're gonna handle solar. Um, but yeah, I, I, I mean, Commissioner Mittelfeld, I agree, I don't, I don't think that there even should be a permit for this, but. I, I just don't know, we, we, we've been over it so many times, I don't know, I don't know if right now is the time to change it or not, um. I don't know, I, I, I'm up in the air, but I, but I, I agree with your concept.
Commissioner Larson?
I think, you know, that very short term, we could, and I think Dave has suggested this in the past as well. Uh, at least in the short term with a recommendation, recommend that. The permit be a no cost permit. Uh, we can't make that determination, we can't make that determination for the, for the city, but the, the commission could make that, that decision, you know, saying that, yes, you, a zoning compliance permit is required, however. Due to the city's interest in promoting this, promoting, promoting solar and renewable clean energy, uh, that, you know, that cost would be, that cost would be waived.
You're saying that would be done by the city commission?
That would be done by the city commission, but we'd have to make that recommendation essentially, and I think that's what Dave had previously suggested, you know, uh. Before is that we could make that recommendation to the city.
Commissioner Mittelfeld?
Yeah, that'd be cool, I think that's a, um, a good way to go to, cause I understand the need for oversight, you don't want people putting like a ground mounted, you know, 16 foot thing on their roof, I understand that you wanna have some oversight, but it. If we could have it be a no cost permit, I think that would be more in the spirit of what we envisioned when we set out to draft this section of the Land Development Code.
So Sarah, if you'd like to make that recommendation when you make a motion, that's where it would go.
Okay.
Would that just be an additional recommendation, like it wouldn't, we wouldn't be changing the code, cause this code doesn't actually lay out the cost, does it? So it would be sort of a separate recommendation, either tacked on or completely separate, that just is a recommendation to the city commission that, you know, in an effort to encourage. The, you know, citizens to use solar, we highly recommend reducing the fee to zero.
That's something that you guys can talk about in the annual report with Dave. Cause that's your time when you're gonna discuss with the city commission. The LDC doesn't talk about fees, the city commission does, and that's when, when you guys are having that annual report with them, maybe you can add that on to your list.
Okay, I mean, I, I would be happy to make that one of our talking points.
Um, I am just gonna let you know that, uh, the internet went down at the service center, so, um, Dave is trying to get on through his phone.
Oh, no.
Can we continue on without him?
Yeah, he, he hasn't said for us to stop, it's just.
Okay, so are we, are, are we comfortable with proceeding i- in that manner? With the, with the code basically as is and then doing a separate recommendation to the city commission, I, I'm okay with that, um.
Yeah, I think all the language in there and the conversations like, you know, Commissioner Dunn mentioned, we have talked about this one a lot, and I do think, um. It's something that we'll see more of as solar takes off, I mean, I was just looking at the queue for energy generation and it is amazing like how much and solar is gonna be blowing up around here. So I think it's something we might need to come back to at some point.
Sure.
But, um, yeah, if we could make that recommendation, if we could put that in there, Joy, when you do your, um. List of greatest hits with the city commission, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
That's a great idea. Um, did Dave get through all of this and we came back to this, or did he, was he still going through?
He, he went through all of it and it was for any questions you had with it.
Okay, um, all right, sorry. That's where we were, so do we have any other issues, questions about this, and Andrea, I take it we have nobody waiting in, in the wings to?
For the public hearing, um. No.
Okay. So it's really discussion amongst us and then we can take a vote? Correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right, are there any other comments, things anybody wants to bring up regarding the LDC, I mean, I know we've been over it pretty fine tooth comb previously, so I'm pretty comfortable with it. But speak now.
I will say, it kinda goes along with the, the last comment about solar, but. I do hope that at some point, and it's obviously not in this round, but in a later round of revisions, that we can take a look and, and try and get a comprehensive. I don't know what to call it really, a comprehensive, uh, plan together that, that makes it as easy as we can for not just solar, but. Um, you know, i- if there, well, wind is a whole nother bag of, big of issues, but, um. You know, any, any sort of, uh, efficiency, environmentally friendly type, uh, things I wanna, I wanna go through and kind of look at this and see if we can kind of have a comprehensive look at. Are we doing everything we can to try and promote those interests? Um, so I, that, that's gonna be on, on my wish list down the road for whatever that's worth.
I think we can certainly add that as well to our, um, presentation to the city commission, and I mean additionally, like I, my, uh, Commissioner Larson and Commissioner Mittelfeld, you know, if you guys ever hear of any sort of. Community grants for sort of looking at code, um. That we could, you know, bring to the city, I think that, you know, it would be great to have a percent, you know, like a professional consultant who specializes in doing that, help us. Um, so if you guys ever hear of anything along those lines, that would be a really great way, I think, to kind of. Fine tune our, our code in a way that makes it more accessible and more appealing. Um, okay. Then if somebody wants to make a motion, I think we could go ahead and do that.
I have a, just a procedural question.
Yeah.
Um, for Andrea, like if I did wanna say something about mentioning, we would like to see the permit for the solar, rooftop solar installation be. A no cost permit, would that be a, a spot where I would include?
This would not be the time.
Okay. All right. Um, well, I can just go ahead and make the motion then. After review of the draft Land Development Code amendments presented as case 02-ZOA-01-2020. And after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of comments of the draft LDC amendments. The planning commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are consistent with the recommendations, goals and policy objectives in the community master plan. Comply with section 54 dot 1405 of the Land Development Code and therefore are justified and appropriate and therefore should be approved by the city commission.
So we have Commissioner Mittelfeld with the motion and Commissioner Dunn with the second. Uh, I'll do a roll call vote, uh, starting with Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Primo? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Mittelfeld?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cardillo votes yes, so the motion carries. Hey, we got Dave back. Okay, um, and then we'll let Dave and Mick get set up and then we can move on to item B, our, uh, 02REZ11-20, which is our rezoning of. 908 Center Street, 1700 Tracy Avenue, 1705 Schaefer Avenue, 1706 Schaefer Avenue and 1829 Van Evera Avenue.
The planning commission is being asked to evaluate at, the attached information that was in the agenda packet regarding the zoning district assignment of the five subject properties that Joy mentioned. Um, both before and after the adoption of the Land Development Code in early 2019 and make a recommendation to the city commission regarding rezoning the properties. All five of the properties have been used for single family dwelling units and were formally zoned as such, and this rezoning is a correction to reestablish the appropriate zoning for those five properties. Um, so they were privately owned and were firmly zoned general residential and they were mistakenly rezoned to the new civic zoning category in February 2019. Along with many properties that, um, were owned by Northern Michigan University, which are adjacent to these properties. The mistake came about because these were mistakenly identified as NNU properties during the community master plan update pro- process. Of identifying properties within the recommended new civic zoning district on the future land use map and the proposed zoning map, which were attached to the staff report. Um, we, as we said, um, it was mistakenly not identified as privately owned, um, and so we are asking for this correction. To the new medium density residential zoning district. The staff report, as you can see, um, all five properties provided what type of structure, the year they were built or remodeled. The surrounding zoning districts. And all this zoning standards of the civic and then what we're proposing to rezone them to the medium density residential. On screen are the five parcels that are outlined in blue here are what we're requesting to rezone to MDR. This is the area map. The block map. And the existing, oh. The existing zoning map. Showing that they're civic right now, and then. In the packet was the official zoning map. Back in 2000, uh, prior to the new Land Development Code, as you can see, they were previously general residential properties. And the future land use map from the master plan. And the proposed zoning map. Photos of the properties and then the proof of publication to meet state requirements. Did you have any questions?
Does not seem like. We have any questions? Commissioner Dunn, did you ever?
Yeah, I, just curious, and I don't, I don't even know that it's relevant considering this is just checking a mistake, but correcting a mistake, but are there gonna be any, um. Nonconformities, uh, that are, we're sort of, we're sort of agreeing to as we change this back, are there, are there any that are nonconforming right now with the MDR?
Well, by making them, uh, civic zoning, we'd be making them nonconforming. Bringing them back to the residential zoning, we're bringing them back into conformance.
Okay, so I, I, I'm just wondering about setbacks and things like that, there wasn't anything that was out of compliance with the MDR?
If it was, it would have when it was general residential, which is what we're, all be, all general residential became. Medium density residential, so we're just asking to bring it back to that same occurrence.
And this, we really became aware of this because of a permit from one of these, um, homes that, uh. There were, I, I basically had to, uh, create a, a, uh, an interpretation to allow. The request to go forward based on these being improperly rezoned. So we don't wanna have to do that anymore, b- basically, these people can't use their homes. As a normal residential property anymore legally without some kind of a. Uh, an interpretation like that existing.
Commissioner Mittelfeld? You're on mute, Sarah.
Sorry, is there any, I was just curious if anyone's here to speak on this or if I can go ahead and make a motion?
Good question.
I, I don't see any, uh, public for this, unless Dave, was Jessica evils, was that for a street reconstruction or was that the rezoning?
For the street reconstruction, right, Dave?
Okay, then no.
Wait a minute.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah, I just. If you wonder why those houses are spotted in that big area. In the mid to late 50s. Northern under eminent domain. Destroyed all the houses that were there, they made people sell their houses to them, and these are the people that put up a fight. So their houses remain there, but Northern did that under eminent domain in the mid, I'd say like 58. And then. They didn't use that property after all those people were put out of their houses until they built those, uh, apartment looking dorms there, the new ones. So that was, uh. A tragedy at the time, there was many people who had homes that lost their own. For a bigger cause. Anyway, that's just the history behind that.
Thank you.
Great information.
Interesting.
Well, I don't think we can fix that problem, but, um, thank you Commissioner Primo for that interesting history, I hadn't heard that, um. But I guess we can go ahead and try to make this right by getting it fixed, um. So after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 02-REZ-11-20, the planning commission finds that the proposed rezoning is justified. But not consistent with the community master plan due to an error in the community master plan that led to the error in the rezoning during the process of a blanket rezoning. Of multiple properties when the Land Development Code was adopted in February of 2019. And that, excuse me, that the proposed rezoning otherwise meets the requirements of the Land Development Code. Section 54 dot 1405 and hereby recommends that the city commission approves 02-REZ-11-20 as presented.
Second by Commissioner Larson, uh, the motion was made by Commissioner Mittelfeld for the record, and I'll do a roll call now, starting with, uh, Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Primo? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Mittelfeld?
Yep.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion carries. Hopefully that makes at least a handful of people's lives easier. Um. So we, Andrew, we don't have any citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items, do we?
Uh, just the one person I mentioned earlier is, is the only one in the waiting room right now.
And she was specifically about, um. Was it French Street?
It was Washington, I believe.
Washington. Why is this not showing Washington on here?
I think I am, I'm not.
It looks like maybe the. Page 51.
Yeah, I'm just not seeing it.
Is incorrect.
What?
It looks like the cover sheet had a typo on it, the, the cover sheet's full of typos on these, um, street reconstruction projects.
Okay. And this is last week's, isn't it?
We go to the cases in the, um. In the agenda.
The, okay, do we need to make any comments about that in the minutes or?
I'll correct that for the official agenda.
Okay.
The notices were supposed to send out.
Yeah, the notices.
I just noticed that now, I, I, I just kind of went through it.
Right. I did include a memo in here that was basically the same as the memo from the last meeting explaining the C I P process and how these projects are and so I won't belabor the point on that, and I won't belabor the point on the individual projects, but if, Andrea, if you can make Mick a co-host here, or?
Yep, he's already a co-host.
Okay, you can drop out if you'd like.
Okay.
And we can take it from here. Thank you. So we're starting with zero five S T R eleven twenty, which is Washington Street between the intersections of Third and Front Street, projected for reconstruction in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, exact timing of the project, subject to a variety of factors. And this is done in accordance with process, as I said, developed through the city planning and engineering departments and the capital improvement project, budgeting, and the city engineers requesting or recommendations from the planning commission on the proposed layout of the streets, and I'll let Mick take it from here.
Sure. This is the, uh, the, I guess, enhancement of the Washington, one hundred block of West Washington.
Mick, I'm sorry, can I just ask you to speak up a little bit? I don't know if anybody else is.
This is the Washington Street Streetscape Project, the limits are from Third Street to Front, Front Street. Here's some fact sheets about the width of the right-of-way, the existing width of the road and pavement. There's parking on both sides, information about the utilities. I guess this project started out as a proposal from the D D A to replace the, the brick pavers that were failing on Washington Street and replace them with stamped concrete. In the process, we discovered that much of the sidewalk is not ADA compliant, along with the, the grade on the, on the brick pavers. So the proposal is to raise the, the roadway to allow for that, the sidewalks and also the, the boulevard or the, the stamped concrete area to be ADA compliant. The proposal is to keep the asphalt street width the same, however, changing from a, a two-foot wide curbing to a one-and-a-half-foot wide curbing, which would change the back of curb, the back of curb by a foot, but the pavement width would remain the same. And we'll be doing some minor utility work or planning on doing some minor utility work with some replacement of some storm drains. But this is mostly a Streetscape project with just replacement of sidewalk, stamped concrete, curbing, and then we'll be adding asphalt to the, raise the road, along with the, we're proposing to replace some of the street trees and then add additional trees, and then also the D D A is planning on putting in some parking, I guess, kiosks as a replacement to the, the meter system down there. Here's a, here's a cross-section of the existing street. As I mentioned, these areas here, the sidewalk and then also the, the brick paver areas are, exceed what's allowed by ADA standards. The idea is we're going to raise the curbing, add more pavement, and replace the sidewalk and the brick pavers and flatten them out like you see in this picture here. Here's the, the project limits, starting at Third, going toward Front. The plan to, the current plan is to keep the, this street narrowing right here, this bump out at, at the intersection of Front. And we're hoping to do this project, just more informational, hoping to start this project as early as we can in the spring and complete it, hoping, start it early May and complete it by mid-June if the weather cooperates. And I think that's, so I had.
Commissioner Dunn?
Um, just a question for my own information, but is it fairly typical to, to do these projects sort of one block at a time? I guess in a lot of neighborhoods, it probably doesn't make a difference, but downtown, I, I'm wondering if, you know, if you've got to go through the trouble to, to block traffic, and you, you're also kind of going for a cohesive look from one block to the next. It seems like it would make sense to try and do them in, in kind of bigger, bigger chunks, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just curious as to why it seems like a lot of these are just sort of one block at a time.
Sure, I guess, yeah, it, it certainly is nice to do, do projects where we can do bigger, bigger chunks at a time, I guess, in this specific circumstance. Now, this is what the D D A had funding for to replace the, the brick pavers on, on this specific block, and I believe, see, the block to the west of this, the brick pavers have, have already been replaced with stamped concrete and then also along Front Street, so this is kind of just filling in the gap, or I guess removing some of the last brick pavers and, and replacing it with stamped concrete.
Um, I have a couple of questions. You know, I guess I was a little bit sort of curious why they wanted to do this now, and I, and I understand that, that redoing the, you know, the P A rating is not terribly bad, and the infrastructure doesn't seem so old, especially compared to some of the other projects we've looked at, but I do understand, you know, wanting to make the sidewalks more ADA, and I'm sure that, you know, that's a good thing, I guess I'm just, and it sounds like you're in communication with the D D A, I guess I'm just curious how recent that communication has been. My only, I guess my cou- a couple of thoughts I have are, you know, the businesses on Washington or Street right now are so dependent on that sidewalk space, are they, are they still really okay with having their street lost for what I'm guessing is, you know, going to be at, at least many weeks in, in the springtime, when they're probably going to be wanting to use a lot of that outdoor space, you know, I, I understand if this was a project that's been in the works for a long time, but have you just sort of had recent conversation with the D D A that this is really the sort of desire of those business owners?
Um, I guess, yeah, to answer your question, as far as being in contact with the D D A, yes, I, we've been in contact, you know, even, even this week. So they're, they're fully aware of the project and are in support of it. As far as the, yeah, the, the P A's are rating, the, the asphalt's not in, in bad shape, and we're not doing any, any major utility replacements other than some, some minor, replacing a couple of catch basins. But other than that, it's, it's mainly just, I guess, yeah, replacing the stamped concrete and, and the only reason we're doing anything with the, the curbing and the, the roadway is just that we need to raise the elevation of it in order to bring the, the sidewalk and, and the brick pavers into ADA compliance, so.
Okay, and then my next question has to do with the infrastructure, you know, we've just raised the building heights here to seventy-four feet, and, you know, I don't expect that, you know, as soon as, you know, that city commission passes that L D C amendment, everybody's going to sort of build seventy-four-foot-tall buildings, but the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we are allowing for increased density on this road now, and i- in your opinion, is the existing infrastructure capable of handling that? Is this something, you know, where maybe we should take this opportunity to increase any of those sizes? I guess it's just something that, you know, as we have these conversations about raising the building heights in the downtown area, I want to make sure that engineering sort of gives us their thoughts on, on what the, the infrastructure can, can, can take.
Sure, yeah, the, the infrastructure is fairly recent, we have a twelve-inch ductile iron water main that runs, runs through there. And the, the sanitary main is, is sufficiently sized and, so I guess, in my opinion, yeah, it would, it, it would, it could certainly handle many more customers without any issues.
So, so a couple of sort of significantly larger buildings, if they were to sort of arrive, get built up in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, this, it's adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is that every, okay, so yeah, I guess that answers my questions.
Yeah, but as far as, as far as the, the water main goes, I mean, as far, domestic users only use a, a small fraction of what the water main is sized for, the water mains are sized for fire flows, so those are, are sufficient in the downtown area, so I, I guess increased domestic usage wouldn't, wouldn't really be a significant factor.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Primo?
Yeah, I think one of the big problems, the way it is right now, the sidewalks drop off, like you said, very quickly. So if you're someone like, and you have to go downtown, you're sitting on a hillside, literally a slope, trying to get around all the people that are sitting in the chairs and all the other stuff there, and people with children have the same problem, they got to walk around these people on a sidewalk that slopes. And I mean, a lot of slopes in places.
Mm-hmm.
So I think this will be a great improvement for that area for the walkability of that street.
Sure, I, I, yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely true, and I agree, I, I was really just only questioning the timing of it, just based on what these businesses have been going through, but it, it, like I said, you know, I defer to the D D A, it's, I know they're in contact with the business owners, and if, if taking the time out to do this is, is worth it for them, then I, you know, absolutely. Oh, Commissioner Larson, did you have a comment, sorry?
I was just going to say, do we need to bring in the, the one citizen, other if, to see if she wants to make public comment?
Um, was it Ebbles, Jessica Ebbles, Dave or Andrea?
See, I think I can unshare my screen. Does it hear the participants?
Yeah. Oh, we must have lost the livestream too, so. I don't see anybody else in there, no.
Um, is this where I would typically see them? No, I just see the seven participants, I don't see anybody in the.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, that was a good point.
In, in that case, I'd like to make a, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, after review of the proposed cross-sections and associated background information for zero five S T R one-one dash twenty, the Washington Street Reconstruction Project, the planning commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the street reconstruction design as presented.
Uh, okay, great, um, we'll do a roll call, Commissioner Dunn?
We don't have a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Oh, right, second, sorry, Commissioner Dunn with the second, Commissioner Larson making the motion, and then, all right, now I'll do a roll call, Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion carries.
And next project is Newbury Street.
All right, so this next project is, is Newbury Street, it's a, a very small project. It's a one, one, one-block project from Division Street to the east end. Here's some information about the right-of-way, the existing street widths. There's currently no sidewalk, no curbing, parking on both sides, and I guess the, the primary factor driving this project was is that there was a, all the, the homes are, are serviced by a one-and-a-half-inch water service line. So the proposal is to replace the, the street structure, add curbing, and the proposed width would be thirty-two feet from the back of the curb to the back of the curb, and then to replace the, the cul-de-sac approximately the same shape as it is, smoothing out some of the sharp edges there, which I can show you. And the sanitary sewer and the services would be replaced, and we would run a, a new water main to the end and, and put a hydrant at the end. Here's an existing cross-section of the street, you can see it's a, there's a kind of a shared travel lane with parking on both sides. Here's the proposed cross-section here, it'd be a, a yield street with parking on both sides, and because it's very low-volume dead-end street, we're including the, the gutter pan and the, and the parking street calculation there. Here's a, here's an overview of the street. As you can see, there's kind of a, little bit of a turnaround area, widened area here, so our plan is to basically keep that approximately the same as it, as it is, but get rid of this sharp corner right here and, and smoothen it out. There is no storm sewer anywhere near this project, water kind of sheet flows over this hillside here, and else, I think if the street breaks about right here and then runs down Division Street, so. Guess that's kind of an overview of, of that project.
Thank you. And we have nobody to speak on this one, for sure, Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I can understand why there's no sidewalks here, it's so low volume and it's a dead end, but a- again, just from my education, is there a, is there a threshold, a, a, and like, is there a certain street density that, that you get to when you start considering putting in a sidewalk, and how is that decided?
It still really is no threshold, I think we try to replace.
We can't hear you, Dave.
I think we, we try to install sidewalks whenever we can, if there's.
Dave, you're gonna have to, I think, get like real close to the computer, sorry.
Yeah, there is no specific threshold, but if there's funding available, the sidewalks would be, you know, designed and installed if, if it's a possibility, you know, with funding, that's the main thing, I think, from year to year. But in, yeah, in some projects, I guess you got to weigh the overall amount of funding and which streets would, if, if there isn't a sidewalk network, which streets would benefit the most by having one. So I don't know what else we might add to that.
Yeah, certainly if, if there was a, you know, a gap that we could fill on a project, you know, that would, that would be a, a significant reason to, to place sidewalks. Yeah, and in this, in this situation being that it's a dead end and a low-volume street, that wasn't part of the, the proposal.
I just anecdotally would tell you that there's, you know, I was involved with planning pedestrian and bike facilities before I became a zoning administrator, a city planner, and worked in a lot of different kind of neighborhoods, and even here in Marquette, we've seen neighborhoods where the engineering department has designed sidewalks in a proposal like this, and the neighbors came out strongly against it. That was Shires Hills, is, uh, some of the streets in there with, is what I recall several years ago going through this, but, and even the sidewalks that were installed on Mesner Street as part of the, the Botwell. the Bothwell Middle School, Safe House School project, we had a very strong vocal opponent that tried to get the neighborhood to reject the project, even though it was funded. And fortunately, that didn't work out for them, and that, that sidewalk is heavily used now, I think. And the Planning Commission actually, after that, was able to work with the city engineer to swing some funding from the, the city sidewalk maintenance project to have sidewalks installed along Altamont Street to connect over to Fisher Street, which there was a huge need there for that. And so the sidewalk thing is, is not always something that people want, I would say, but we try to make it happen where we can, for sure.
Yeah, I've been a part of some of those where the people really didn't want the sidewalk. I think maybe it was at Center Street, going out towards Trobridge. There's a lot of pushback. Anyway, it happens. Um, any other questions on this one, or comments? Motions?
I can go ahead and make a motion.
Right.
We're good with this? Uh, let's see the language, okay. "After review of the proposed cross-section and associated background information for 06-STR-11-20, the Newberry Street Reconstruction Project, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the reconstruction design as presented."
Do you have a second?
A second.
So Commissioner Middlefelt with the motion, Commissioner Dunn with the second. Um, and I will do a roll call. Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion carries.
So we have one more project, street reconstruction project.
And we have one more, right?
Our last street reconstruction project is Shires. And let me take it.
Oh, I can't hear anyone.
Last one of the night, last one of the year. The Shires Drive Reconstruction, the limits of this project are from US 41 to schoolcraft road. Uh, here's some information about the right-of-way, the current street width. There is either no curbing on the road, or there's some existing asphalt curbing that's in very poor shape. Currently, there is parking, there's allowed on both sides of the street. Uh, there is no water main, there is no sanitary sewer, there is no storm sewer. The PISA rating is a two, so it's a very rough round. So the, the primary issues, I guess, behind this, this street reconstruction project are is that the road is in, in poor shape. And then there's also no, no water main on, underneath the road. There's, there's no sanitary sewer. However, there's no need for that on this street, because all the houses are serviced off of side streets. And there is no storm sewer, but we have no storm sewer to tie into. So the, the proposal is to reconstruct the street with a, with a 20 feet back curb to back of curb. And then to, we're gonna, open to tie into the, the widened area, US 41. It'll make more sense when I show you the picture. Parking is proposed on, on one side of the street as opposed to both, because this is kind of a, a main entrance to the Shires Hills development, and there's a lot of mailboxes on the, on the east side of the road. So. Let's see, a water main is planned. It would, it would connect the Shires Hills subdivision to a, a water main on the east side of US 41. We have to do some directional boring underneath the highway, but that would significantly help fire flows in the, in the Shires Hills neighborhood, which are currently lower than what they need to be. Plenty on putting in asphalt curbing, or sorry, concrete curbing to replace the asphalt curbing. And as far as accommodating stormwater, it would be accommodated through some curb cuts and some shallow swales, which could include, include some retention for, for water quality purposes. Here's an existing cross-section. And here's a proposed cross-section. You can see we're going with the, the rolled styled curb, which we've used previously in Shires Hills area. Uh, it kind of more mimics the, the asphalt curbing that's out there, so there's not a big fill area back here to fill if we keep the road at approximately the same elevation. And as you can see here, we're proposing parking on the west side of, of the road facing US 41. There's a bunch of mailboxes in here, so I think parking on this side would be better. And if we, being that this is a sort of a main entrance into Shires Hills, not having parking on both sides would, would allow for, I guess, better passage of emergency vehicles during the winter time. Would give them more, more room. All right, here's an overview, aerial overview of the project. Starting here at this intersection, working down towards 41, we're plenty on tying in this water main down Shires Hills and then boring underneath 41 and connecting to this dead-end water main. So it provide critical fire flows to the, to the neighborhood. I think that's all I had.
But can you just point out which side the parking will be on in this plan?
The parking would be on the, I guess, yeah, sorry, be the, uh, this side, the, the, the side opposite from the, the mailboxes, so, yeah, the, I guess it'd be kind of the north side, northwest side.
Okay. And again, we have nobody to speak on behalf of this. So we can just discuss. Commissioner Larson?
It, as far as parking goes, I mean, have, have there been, have there been issues with parking on the street? You know, are, are we potentially causing, or going to cause issues by doing so? I don't know how, how, if that, if there's no parking over there, or if there, if both sides are currently being used, and, you know, people will kind of depend on that, on that two side of the, two side of the street parking, you know, does this cause more issues for, are we trying to correct for an issue that doesn't really exist, I guess? That's what I'm, I'm getting at.
Yeah, and I guess in, in, in other areas like Marquette Drive, which we recently did, we had the same cross-section, and we did, we did allow parking on both sides of the road. There is other streets in Shires Hills with the same cross-section, which we've allowed parking on both sides of the road. So, yeah, it, I don't, I'm not sure if it's, if it's currently an issue. It could be an issue, I guess, if people park on, on both sides of the road during the winter months. It could, it could cause kind of a bottleneck in there, perhaps, but I guess, we could, we could allow parking on both sides of the road, I'd be fine with that. Or I guess continue to have parking on both sides of the road.
I guess, it seems like an improvement to me, just because I know, I mean, on some of these newer roads, when you have the double parking, you basically end up in a bottleneck. And there, it does look like there's really only the one house on the opposite side. But I don't know. Again, this is one where the street section wouldn't change either way, it's really sort of a traffic control issue, so I don't know, what do you guys, what do the rest of you think? Commissioner Dunn?
Well, for the, in regard to the parking, I, I think most of the, I don't know if they're townhomes or duplexes down below. I don't, I don't think that they park up on Shears Drive, because it's kind of a steep hill to go down to, to where those, those front doors are. So we're really only talking about a couple of houses, I, I can't imagine there's, there's that much parking there.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yeah, I was just looking at, using some of the Google tools to look at like what this neighborhood is like, because I don't, I'm not super familiar with that part of town, and it, it does look, it's like, it's a, pretty much looks like an artery to a bunch of other little tributaries over there, like the Birchwood Drive and a couple other little kind of offshoots. But it, it doesn't really look like the, the, the density of parking needs that you see on, like, you know, north of Washington Street in those neighborhoods. So I, yeah, I don't know if, I wish someone from the area was here, because I just don't know if there's that much demand for parking in this area, it doesn't seem like it would have that much demand for it.
Commissioner Larson?
And I'm, and I'm okay with it, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we, you know, we think of it, because, you know, once you, if it's historically been parking, it hasn't been an issue. Uh, you know, I, I just really want to point out that, you know, if you were living there and you came to rely on that, that this would come as a change. I know notices were sent out, and, you know, folks had a chance to be here. And I, I guess if it does become an issue, they potentially could come back to the city and discuss it with, with folks and maybe make a change back, you know, to, to the, the other, the other way. I don't know if that's ever, ever been done, you know, where you've taken parking away from one side of the street, then, you know, given it back, uh, because it had, it did cause issues for that particular neighborhood. Uh, you know, so I, I don't know, Dave, if you know something like that, or Wayne, maybe you've, you've, you've seen things like that in your, your time on the Planning Commission.
And I don't know, maybe, maybe you should improve the cross-section.
I, I think that makes sense, Commissioner Larson. I mean, we can, I think going with what Mick thinks is sort of the safest option, since there is nobody here complaining about it. But, you know, if, if it happens and everybody is very upset about it, you know, there's certainly, you know, we're not doing anything that would preclude changing it back.
Actually, Dave and I just, just talked here, and I think perhaps the best thing right now would be to just approve the, the street cross-section. And then the, this would be more of a parking advisory, Michael, Captain Mike Lorilla decision. So might, might be the best thing to just do that. And then they, they could handle whether or not they want to remove parking from the, the southeast side of the road.
Okay. Uh, any other thoughts on this one?
Should that be addressed in the motion? Should that be a condition?
So that, there is a little ignore the parking, no parking part of it.
I, I, I don't think so. The fact is, I, I doubt there are.
Can you guys hear Dave? I can't hear him.
I can't hear him either.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This wouldn't involve the, the engineering department changing the status of any signs on the street, right? Uh, like, if there are no parking signs there, um, there aren't those now, and you wouldn't put those in there.
We coordinated with Public Works.
Yeah.
We could, we could leave that out of the recommendation, or include that in the recommendation. Parking would remain on, uh, on both sides. And then would, would just approve the.
We can't hear Mick right now. It's, sorry, we can only hear you guys if your faces are like right in the microphone.
You, you can go ahead and make the recommendation, instead of us presenting with the condition.
We can't hear you, Dave, I'm sorry.
All right, so can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so you could just make the recommendation that, that the, to approve the street cross-section, but that parking would remain on, on both sides of the road, or that parking would not be affected. And then the traffic, traffic and, or traffic and parking advisory committee, they might have interest in, in signing one side or the other.
Okay. That's clear to me, does that make sense to you guys?
I, I think so. Yeah. So I guess I'll try and make a motion here.
Yeah.
It's my turn, I guess. "After review of the proposed cross-sections and associated background information for 07 STR 11-20, the Shires Drive Street Reconstruction Project, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the street reconstruction design as presented."
I think you've got a good, good condition.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You want, with the condition that the parking will remain the same?
With the condition that the parking remain the same.
Does that sound good to you, Mick?
Yes.
Can we get a second?
Second. Oh, Michael can do it.
Hey, Commissioner Larson with the second. Commissioner Dunn made the, um, the motion, and so I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion carries. And just going quickly through, we don't have any citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items. We don't have any correspondence reports or minutes from other boards or committees. And then we do have an added work session. And we'll give, I don't know.
Okay, so the work session, I just wanted to bring out, and I have on my laptop downstairs, I had the presentation that I started to, started work on, doing for this year. Um, I just wanted to let you know that we, we do have the presentation, and it's going to be the same night that the City Commission is reviewing the ordinance amendments, the LDC amendments. So that's kind of a, a nice circumstance there, a coincidence. Since I don't have that presentation to show you, though, I'd just say, you know, think about any goals at their, our next meeting, we'll, we'll really need to go over and kind of fill in some blanks on that, which would be any things you think are important to work on in the coming year. And any accomplishments of this past year that you, or a past year and a half. It's been a year and a half since the Planning Commission did a presentation to the City Commission. Uh, it was supposed to have been done around June of this year. So anyway, that, that's it, I won't drag it out any longer than that. And then we'll look at it at the next meeting, at our work session.
Okay. Sounds good, we'll all try to think of things. I think we talked about a couple of things tonight regarding fees for the solar. Actually, I don't know if you were here for that, Dave.
Well, yeah, I, I understand, I don't know if there's agreement on that, but, um, yeah.
Well, the idea was more just to say, not to eliminate permits, but encourage potentially either low or no fees for them. So that's something we could discuss. And then additionally, like, just further continuing to look at how we can make our code friendly to solar and wind. I know we've already done a lot of work on it, but, you know, just kind of keeping ourselves open to further improvements. I was sort of thinking, talking about, you know, this project we'd like to address regarding the CBD, and, you know, exploring density bonuses would be something we could talk about as future projects. What we can all think about, I think. But we can all think about, I think, things that we would like to see and accomplishments that we've made and have that for the next meeting.
And if anybody has any pictures that they think would be appropriate to use, forward them to me and I can share them with the group. I really want to make this a, a little as text as possible so Joy can be reading anything she wants to say if she needs to read off the notes section and just really be a graphic-heavy kind of presentation. And it's only a, this is like a, it, I don't know if you, everybody's seen this kind of presentation before, but it's a five to 10-minute presentation altogether, top. 10 minutes tops. Five minutes is more, more accurate. So we're not presenting a lot of information to the city commission. Just a really basic thumbnail summary of the year or the last period.
Sounds good. Okay. That sounds good. Is that, is that everything you want to cover on that topic, Dave?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Then we can move on to commission and staff comments. Let's start with Commissioner Dunn. No, you're good. Okay. Commissioner Middlefelt?
No comments.
Commissioner Larson?
My, my only comment, I, I think is, do we, do we, will we continue to be doing Zoom into the next year? Like, has the governor allowed that to happen for like Public, Public Meetings Act and, you know, so on, that we'll be able to continue meeting this way?
Would anticipate that's going to be the case. We're back on a reduced staff schedule at our offices now as of tomorrow. So, yeah, things aren't going in the right direction, that's for sure.
Yeah, they're correct.
Commissioner Primo?
The only comment I've got when you're talking about the solar panels and permits, don't forget whether it's a homeowner or doesn't itself, which he's allowed to do, he's gonna have to, whoever's doing that has to get an electrical permit from the county. And most people don't know what they have to do and, uh, I don't know, you just free everything and the point at which people just do things and can be kind of detrimental to themselves. So there is a county permit involved in that solar panels. There's not with singles or metal roof replacement. That's all.
Dave?
Yeah, and to tag on to that comment, that I was starting to explain, I guess, my, my understanding, when the internet went down and I realized I was talking to myself, I was talking about the fact that in some communities where you have a combined zoning and building department, that's where you don't have necessarily a zoning permit fee because this, like, that's what they do in Traverse City. I called and talked to their zoning administrator and he said he does approve all the permits that come in for solar installations on rooftops. Just the same thing that we would do, but because they have a building department in-house at the city level in the same building, I guess, they, they've worked that out so that they don't basically have the zoning fee attached. So we don't have that. We have completely different agencies and we do need, because these standards for the separate structure has to, we have to confirm that it's within the setbacks mainly and that the height isn't exceeding the allowable height on the building. We, you know, we have to do that. And we can't, we can't negotiate a fee reduction with the county or something, you know? We're different agencies, so that, that's, that's what I was just explaining is we're, we're not, a lot of communities can probably do that without two fees. We can't.
Okay. Um. All right, are there any other, any other, oh Andrea, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and we're not meeting again until December, right?
December 1st.
December 1st. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Bye.
Thanks Andrea. Andrea kept it going, kept the recording going while we were. Thanks Mick. Glad you were here. I probably would have scrambled home trying to get on.